For any item not on the agenda. Is anyone here wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Before we continue, I'd like to do introductions of the committee members. Again, I'm Mary Kohler, I'm the chair. Supervisor Jerry Bullock is to my right, and Supervisor Al Matano. We may be joined by Supervisor Patrick Miles. Also here are staff, zoning administrator Roger Lane, Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Eversen, and Director of Planning and Development Todd Vialante. Also here tonight is Use Governance Program member Joe Finkelmeier. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out one of these white forms. If you wish to speak tonight and haven't filled out a form, they're right over there for you to fill out. And then turn it in to Roger or Dan. When the petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the podium, or actually this cable up here, and address the committee members, just the committee members. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of the registrants is as follows: after the petitioner, or agent, or any other person wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. Again, all speakers will address the committee and not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting. However, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes a petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on a conditional use permit is a final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the county board. The next county board meeting is June 1st. The next ZLR committee meeting is June 13th. The first petition on our agenda is 11-125, which has been withdrawn. Do you want to ... anything? Okay, great.
Has been withdrawn by them.
Okay. And following then is 11-126, rezone petition by Edwin Rodensmitch, Town of Cross Plains.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mike Rustler. I'm representing the Rodensmitch family. They have a farm south of Cross Plains, a couple hundred acres. They have three building splits coming in on their parcel. And we're making a petition to rezone 15 acres from A1 exclusive to RH3. The land is wooded, there is no tillable land, and it does a but residential division already. And we're requesting that it be rezoned allow for a single-family home.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Shankacy?
Shankacy.
Did you want to speak, or ...?
Well, I have the neighboring property, and so I was just here as a matter of interest. And just for clarification, it is one single, one family?
Correct.
That is correct. There is one house, one lot, and they could build an accessory building on that property as well.
Yeah, I have no objection.
Okay, just for information.
Just for information.
Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak, either in support or in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it is approved. Next on our agenda is 11,127, rezone from Gary Leverance in the Town of Oregon. Did you get a chance to fill out the form?
Yes. I filled out one.
Followed her, thank you.
I'm Gary Leverance. This is my son Brandon Leverance.
5610 Alpine Road, the Town of Oregon. We're currently RH4, and we would like to go to A2. We're currently growing apples, and we would like to build a barn to put equipment and stuff like that in, but we can't on the RH4.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Someday we may put a house there, but for right now, it's basically just agricultural, and we need that building.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Oregon has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you. Thank you much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, next petition is 11,128, rezone Dawn Evert, Town of Mazo Maney.
Thank you much.
Hi there. I'm Dawn Evert. I live at 9513 State Road 19 in Mazo Maney. We are currently interested in transferring development rights from the farm that we own at that location down to the property that we own in the Town of Berry. Address is 5631 Hudson Road. We would like to create two residential lots. And let's see, we want to rezone from A2 to RH2.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't know, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Mazo Maney has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I have a question for Roger. This is the first time I've heard of a transfer of development rights going across town lines. Is that something ...?
No, it's not going across town lines. It's right at the edge. You can see the map that, yeah, they're going pretty from one edge of the town to the other, but they're still staying within the town. That would ...
I thought I heard the petitioner say it was in the Town of Berry, so ...
Oh, did I say that?
I heard it, but apparently you did not say it.
I'm in the Town of Mazo. I did used to live in the Town of Berry.
Okay, maybe I did hear.
But, no, Town of Mazo.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
I have a quick question for Roger. Do we know on the transferring property, are there rights remaining, or do we need to do any ...?
Yes, there are. There's two density studies in there. I don't have them ...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep. That we verified that the sending area does have two housing density rights, and so they will be here. And then the appropriate documentation will be recorded deed restrictions and notices on both properties, so we could track where they were extracted from and how those two lots originated.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezone petition 11,129, MDW Investments, Town of Perry.
I am here representing MDW Investments. The petition that is shown on the screen right now has been amended, and the town has taken action on the amended petition. And I don't know who I talked to and let them know that.
So the configuration is different?
The variation is different. The RH1 rectangular piece is moved 165 feet to the south because to take it ... we had a site visit, and the town had concerns about that being in Class 1 soils, and so it's being moved 165 feet to the south. And then the RH2 zoning, the five-acre piece, that's going to be changed to a two-acre piece as the town recommended. You can see that dark orange piece that's there right now, that is actually an RH zoning now too, so a portion of that will be turned back into agricultural once the zoning takes place. So I don't know how you want to act on it, or if you can act on it, since it's not the ...
With town conditions.
With town conditions.
So it changed though?
Okay. So yeah, it's got to revise my ... which I ... oh, you do, okay. Yep. So those are the two rezones that we plan on ...
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Did you have questions for us?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Perry has approved this petition with the revised CSM lot locations.
Which is in ...
Move approval as amended by the town.
Second. So we have a motion to approve as amended by the town. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. You're next. Okay. Rezone petition 11,130, okay.
Right, and this one is just separating the existing farm buildings and houses from the agricultural land. And it's approximately five acres that's being rezoned up RH2, I believe.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Perry has approved this petition as well, with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second, or a motion and a second, to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezone 11,131, Shane Legler, in the Town of Albion.
Hi. Shane Legler, I live at 216 G. Road, Edgerton, Wisconsin, Township of Albion, and I'm trying to get rezoned from R1 to A2 to build a new garage.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Albion has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is 11,132, Tina Hayward, in the Town of Rutland.
I'm Bob Hayward, this is my wife Tina, and we are ... we live at 364 Page Low Lane, Section 30, in the Town of Rutland. And we're currently in R1, and we're looking to go to an A2/1, and it's for a small business, family business.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
This is still pending at the Town of Rutland.
Okay, and you understand our rules? I don't know if you heard me, that if the town hasn't taken action, it's on our rules to postpone.
As soon as they take action, then we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Are there any quick questions for the petitioners while they're here?
No. Motion to postpone.
Move to postpone. Can I combine the rezone and the CUP vote?
Thanks.
So I'll move.
Second. So we have a motion to postpone the rezone and the CUP due to lack of town action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's postponed due to lack of town action.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is rezone petition 11,134, Richard Fahy, in the Town of Montrose.
Yes, I'm Richard Fahy. I live at 7532 Waltham Road, in the Town of Montrose, and we're the two applying for this A1 exclusive for two RH1 housing units, two acres each. And I will also have only one driveway and split it, so I minimize as much as possible. And I guess the town board did have any trouble with it, so, because that's all I know.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Montrose has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposition? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. Next, rezone 11,135, Dale and Diane Helt, in the Town of Dane.
I'm Diane Helt, and my husband Dale, and we live at 6867 Levine Road in Dane, Wisconsin. And we're here because we would like to move one of our building sites from one farm to another in the Town of Dane, and then change the zoning, remove it to from A1 exclusive to RH1. And the location it's getting moved to is west of 7050 Levine Road.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I guess just that we're moving a building site, so we can keep our agricultural land intact and build our house closer to some other homes.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Dane has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Next is rezone 11,136, Screamin Norwegian Farms, in the Town of Cottage Grove.
The petitioner requests this petition be postponed because they're still figuring out how to separate the homes off the farm.
Okay. Move postpone. Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Any ayes? No. It's approved. We postponed the Screamin Norwegian. Next.
Is it legal to approve a zoning petition from a screaming person?
If it's a Norwegian, anyway. Do we have 11,137?
Yes, we ...
I don't have a form.
11,37?
Yeah. Did you get a chance to fill out a form?
Pardon?
Did you get a chance to fill out a form?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Here, have a seat, and we'll hear from you, and Dan will get you a form. If you could just introduce yourself and where you live.
I'm Peter Kurt, the personal rep for the Lucy Manhart Estate, and I'm actually asking for an abeyance now, because I know that Town of Burke has not dealt on this yet, conflict scheduling problem with my surveyor, so I'm asking to postpone it until you hear from the Town of Burke.
Great. Did Roger want to add anything?
No, it's still pending at the Town of Burke.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support or in opposition? Okay.
Move postpone.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? It's postponed.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next is rezone 11,138, in the Town of Mazo Maney, Leonard Zudi.
I'm Doug Zudi, and I'm the trustee of my father's trust. And in order to distribute that out of the trust, it's under 35 acres, so it has to be rezoned. So that's the reason.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No. In conjunction with it, we're also reconfiguring the parcel behind it with this parcel, so that the other parcel has direct access to Cook Road. Otherwise, it's a line lock.
Is that another petition you're doing?
No, it's part of the ...
It is part of this, okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Just to clarify, the second lot is over 35 acres in size, and it will retain the A1 exclusive zoning, and I believe housing density rights will be also parked on that. Yes. The Town of Mazo Maney has approved this with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone no? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is CUP 2377, the Board of Regents of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, in the Town of Dunn.
Bo Muhahd, representing the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Property location is at 3725 Schneider Drive, in the Town of Dunn. It is currently zoned A3, and we are requesting a conditional use expansion of existing governmental uses on the property. The reason for the change is we would like to install a ropes course, and the ropes course isn't currently permitted under Section 1001 of the Dane County Court of Orders.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town has approved this petition with conditions. They have been incorporated into the three conditions that are located in your packet, most of which basically gives a list of government uses occurring on the property, including the proposed ropes course.
I'll make a motion to approve with the town and staff conditions. I'll second if the motion includes that this requires a CUP 22.
Are you going to say? Okay. We have a motion and a second with the conditions, including superseding the CUP. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? And it's approved. Next is CUP 2378, Leah Zimba, in the Town of Albion.
Yes. Hi there. My name is Leah Zimba. This is my husband, Tim Zimba, and our daughter Clara Zimba. We live at 1397 Hillside Road, Cambridge, Wisconsin. And we're simply seeking a conditional use permit for a modification from A28 to A28 with unlimited animal numbers. And talking with the town, they have asked for an animal unit or an animal number restriction, and we're comfortable with that restriction.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Roger?
The Town of Albion has approved this conditionally used permit, with the condition that there be no more than 50 animal units on the property, and manure management plant would need to be in place.
I do approve.
We have a motion and ...
With the conditions stated, but ...
We have a motion and a second with the conditions for approval. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Next, from our previous meeting, is Tzenic Enterprises in the Town of Burke, the rezone 11,071.
Yes, this petition was postponed at the December 13, 2016 meeting due to no town action, and also the request that the City of Madison act on the deed restriction as well. Since that time, both the Town of Burke and the City of Madison have approved the request for revising deed restrictions on the property, which would allow outdoor display of products. At the May 9 meeting, Supervisor Matano stated that that would be nice to limit the maximum number of objects being on that, so they don't get too crowded. We worked with the petitioner and came up with no more than 15 units or objects being placed on the northerly section, north of Token Creek. And then there is a small C2, there's a larger C2 section along here that allows outdoor display, and there's no more than 20 objects displayed there. The deed restrictions have been revised to reflect those items. They have also, the deed restrictions still have in place that there are limitations both in the C2 areas of just display on the northerly property and the lower C2, the Motorsports retail shop, and also billboards are prohibited on both zoning areas.
Roger, so in those last couple points in the update, the signs are prohibited and deed restrictions have been revised. So those are in place, they're not part of what we're approving.
Yeah, right now, there are, this property was owned C2 a few years ago. Madison Motorsports put their shop in, they display materials here. And then this was owned A2 and prohibited from any development due to Token Creek and the pond. There was this existing gravel area here, which they started putting small sheds on to display for sale. So we went out, it was a violation, we told them to remove the sheds until such time as this was revised to allow display of materials. So in order to do that, they needed to rezone at the C2 and get town approval and the City of Madison, because the City of Madison also had deed restrictions that limited the land use to that. So since that time, all the parties have agreed that, yes, the existing gravel area could be used for a small display area, and the necessary deed restrictions were prepared and both approved by the Town of Burke and the City of Madison.
So they only conditionally need to put in, if we approve it, is the limit of 15 objects? Or is that a deed restriction?
Or you could say approved with the attached revised deed restriction, because the one in your packet has all the necessary information. With the 15 and 20, it has a lot of stuff in there, and limits just that northerly section just to a display area.
That would be my motion to approve.
Second, that's ...
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions, including those in the staff report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, plat, some certified survey members.
All right, get to the good stuff now. First one is a final plat, Woods Farm, City of Madison. This is before you for our certification. This is before you for certification, amount of objection. This one consists of 130 lots, 60 acres. There is an outlot that is being dedicated to the public for park purposes. As far as major highways or corridors, you have right of road running north and south, drainage channels, all lots subject to public easements for drainage purposes. Schools are established. Outlots 1, 2, and 4 are being dedicated to the public for stormwater management.
Certification, amount of objection?
Second. We have a motion and a second for certification of non-objection. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? It's approved for non-objection.
Next one is the final plat, Spruce Hollow replat, number one. The preliminary plat was approved two weeks ago. This is now the final version. This is located in the town of Middleton, Section 20. 12 residential lots, not quite 12 acres. Current zoning district is A1, so there's no change in zoning. The conditions are exactly the same as they were for the preliminary plat, so...
Move approval with the conditions. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second with the conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
And then the next two are certified survey maps that are not associated with the rezone petition. The first one is Kavan, two lot certified survey map in the town of Verona. The comments that I've got on my attached map here are from Brian Standing. So both of these land division applications, I ran them through planning for comments with regards to the comprehensive plan. The current zoning district is R3A for this property, however, the town of Verona is limiting both of these lots to single-family units only, so... Now, if you want me, is there anything else I can add? They're basically just dividing it in two and to allow for an additional home site.
So Brian Standing have any concerns as far as consistency with comprehensive plan?
No, he didn't formally put together a memo, he just, you know, just sent me an email, and I just kind of copied, you know, word for word what he sent me in his email, which is attached in those...
It is an urban residential area, planning area, and that urban residential area has six dwelling units per acre. And it's the northerly portion that has quite density, quite dense in the town.
Yes.
If it's where I think it is, it's on the road into Epic.
Yep, that's correct.
And I guess my vote would be the more density, the better here, so I would approve. What, are you looking for a certificate of non-objection?
No, it's just basically a motion to approve the land division. And then what I'll do is, subject to the approval, I'll send out a conditional approval letter back to the surveyor, and then let the town and city of Verona know as well that, along with my comments, that the zoning committee is in support of the land division.
I was a little confused by the map, though. It's the one below, like at the southeast corner of that intersection?
Yeah, this one right here.
And so, and then the other map showed it split in two, so I don't really...
That should be actually viewed...
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
This is the entire lot here.
Turn the map counterclockwise or head clockwise.
I was just, I looked back and recorded it like a dozen times, and I just couldn't follow it. That helps a lot, thanks.
If you want to understand, the reason for the configuration is to keep their subject system with lot one, lot two will have their own system, so...
Second, survey is my time decision.
Well, now that I know what look like north was last, I'm more understanding of it.
So that is a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone knows? It's approved. Lots?
Next one is in the town of Middleton, Section 30. Current zoning district is C1, commercial. There are no sensitive environmental features. Kurt Codel has a memo, hopefully it's attached and within your packet. He's addressed this, there's no concerns. There will be some redevelopment issues from the Land and Water Resources Department with regards to stormwater. The other thing to note, too, that you'll see in a couple of weeks, is there's a subdivision plat that's directly to the south of this by the same applicant. And so Welcome Drive will be extended to the south, basically dividing this, what you see currently, lot two and lot one. And then Welcome Drive will continue this way into this proposed subdivision plat that you'll see in two weeks. And that will be for, just initially just for acceptance, so...
Why wouldn't they make this part of that?
I don't know. My, well, it's probably because of the zoning, it could be because of the zoning, keeping them separate. Because the zoning to the south is A1, so...
I'll move approval.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? It's approved. Survey.
That's it, and then the report is with regards to the CSMs that have been signed and recorded.
And this is Joe's last meeting with ZLR. But you're going where?
Personnel and finance.
Ta-da. You'll be well-rounded after this, too. So thanks for being here.
Thanks for being very accommodating and very friendly, and all of you have made this a pretty enjoyable experience, so happy to have you here.
I was thinking, people's impressions of a ZLR meeting. It's over in a half hour, and we say yes, and kind of say...
You gotta get a say.
Yeah, why were we here two and a half hours the last time?
I was writing the press release.
There you go.
There's no land division waivers this time.
Yeah, okay, so, thanks.
We'll have to get some people from the street to heckle.
Oh, okay, answer.
Heckle the petition.
I don't think Mary was complaining. Well, we're trying to keep building the...
Our next members are Ayomi Obuse, Obuse? Do you know how to, I have to get his pronunc, he or she's pronunciation before, Sam Fisher. And there's a reception, 6 o'clock on June 1st, before our county board meeting. Anything else?
Nothing.
German.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of a German, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.